Okay. I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 4th, meeting of the City of Algoma Common Council. I'd like to have the clerk take the roll, please.
Mary.
Here.
Dashlet.
Here.
Boer.
Here.
Piarkey.
Here.
Lattonback.
Here.
Meverden.
Here.
Havick.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the minutes reflect that this meeting was posted in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval or changes to the order of the agenda? I would like to request that the council make a motion to change the agenda and move the closed-session part to the very end, rather than before the administrative reports or the mayor's appointments, so that nobody has to stick around for that.
Moved.
Moved by Jake, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Seconded by John. They're pointing both ways. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting minutes from September 7th to September 21st. Did everybody have a chance to review those? Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve both of them.
So moved.
Moved by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment? Is there anybody here this evening that wants to speak under public comment? Public comment simply means that items that are not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes. In length, commentators must state name and address for the record. The council's role is to listen and not discuss, debate, comments, nor take action on those comments. Is there anybody here that wants to speak under public comment? Hearing none, we're going to move on to consideration of the bills. General bills and credit card payments. Did everyone have a chance to review those?
Yes.
Any questions on any of the bills?
I have one.
Yes?
Sarah, for mileage, you got 553.28.
That was for the year, for when I take my personal card to Green Bay to shop for the youth club.
How come you don't use the city card?
The city card?
City gas card. Don't you have one for Parks and Rec?
Yes, that's just the way that we had it budgeted.
Well, you still can take that money and put it toward the card payment.
Yep, that's just the way it was budgeted.
You know.
Any other questions or comments on the bills? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Leah. Roll call vote, please.
Mary.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Lattonback.
Yes.
Piarkey.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Havick.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Thank you. We have no conference attendance requests. Under claims, there is a claim for damage caused by the storm on July 26, 2021. Jared?
Yep, so what we have in the packet tonight is a letter of disallowance that is the recommendation from our liability carrier. Basically, what happened was this is in reference to the tree that was blown over in the wind over on Clark and Third. It was blown over in the July 26 storm and heaved the road and the curb, and as a result, caused some damage to a car that was parked right there. But as our carrier notes in the letter, at the end of the day, while it's an unfortunate situation, the city's not liable because it was nothing that we could have foreseen or prevented, or it was not due to any negligence on our part. So the recommendation is to disallow the claim.
This was a subrogation claim, wasn't it?
Correct.
In other words, it was the insurance company of the car that was damaged trying to seek other dollars to pay that claim.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions of that? I entertain a motion to disallow that claim.
So moved.
You pick it.
Moved by Steve, seconded by John. Any questions or comments? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports? Everybody have a chance to review all the committee reports? And for those of you at home that's out on cable, if you want to review them all and go through them, or if you have any questions after reviewing on cable, please contact City Hall. If there are no questions on any of the committee reports, then I would accept a motion to approve the receipt of them.
I have a number of questions.
Which one in particular? What committee?
Well, the medical center board meetings. The Friday, September 10th, 2021, at 1:00 PM meeting, the Algoma Community Center, or at the Algoma Medical Center, a couple of things stood out. Under old business, the director of nursing resigned. That was the first I had heard of it last week, when I got this packet as an official acknowledgment of that resignation. What took so long? Number two, administrator has resigned. Again, this is the first official recognition that I have been made aware of, of that event as well. I think it's almost unconscionable that a significant business that the City of Algoma runs, that the council was not informed immediately about those occurrences. Thirdly, a budget. Bottom of the page, current budget versions projected the Algoma Medical Center, LTC, Long-Term Care Center, to lose between 412,605 and $485,319 per year if conditions remain the same. Why was that not brought to the attention of the Finance and Personnel Committee last month? Again, these are omissions that I think are critical and that answers deserve to be made. Why? Why weren't we aware of this stuff? Secondly, medical center board, Thursday, September 23rd, 2021, 4:30 PM. We have some pending litigation going on with the Algoma Medical Center. Administrative facility report, minutes, court case, we were updated on this progress. Again, that is of vital importance to the common council of the City of Algoma to know what those updates are. Why were we not informed? Those are the questions that I have, Your Honor.
John, you want to take it, or should I?
It's a toss-up. I know the minutes were recorded accurately, so I know that everyone has that information available to them. Why did we not make a personal outreach to everyone in the common council? The assumption is, I think, that the minutes provide that information, which is what you're quoting from. Other than that, do you have additional?
Received on Friday, October 1st.
That's not when they were submitted.
Then someone is responsible for delay in reporting of this stuff to the common council. Somebody is remiss in reporting very, very critical information about a business that this council and this city operates. That's unforgivable. These are critical issues.
Well, first of all, the med center is a separate entity of the city. It's a standalone, just like the utility is. And when the minutes are taken at the meeting, we've always, in the past, felt it was suffice for the council to get their information at that time. We have resignations up there constantly, believe it or not. It's hard for us to keep staffing, but as far as the administrator giving her resignation and the reasons why was talked about, but it does state it in the minutes, the board, including myself, didn't think that it's imperative that we have to make a special announcement to the council.
Okay.
As far as the budget, the budget has not been approved. Those comments that were made by the administrator were for the board to start considering the budget for the upcoming year. There is some serious notes in those comments, but we said we could not continue to operate the way we're going, so we need to make some changes. And those changes are being looked at by the board currently. The budget has not been adopted, so, I mean, and I understand your concern, but the board in the past has not come to the council with every thing that goes on up at the nursing or at the utility, to be exact. I mean, utility, you find out when you read the minutes, that all of a sudden, somebody plans on retiring in April, for example, from the utility. We don't, the utility commission doesn't make it a point to go back and tell the council, well, there's somebody that's going to be retiring.
The retirement at the utility was a clerk position, not the one and two executives of a business operated by the City of Algoma.
But I'll tell you, Jake, that the DON position, that person has just been in that position since February. We had a resignation of the DON prior to that, that was in the minutes that nobody ever questioned. So, I mean, if, you know, I agree with John. I think the minutes, and John takes the minutes, the minutes are self-explanatory, and a great job is done by John, because everything that goes on in that, at those board meetings, is in those minutes, except for closed session. And of course, there would not be in the minutes. And there's things that get discussed in closed session that do not get discussed with the council. I understand, I appreciate your question, but I don't know what else, John, if you have something else to add, that's...
The minutes are taken and submitted to the clerk for distribution, ostensibly for the information to the president of the board and to the mayor, in particular, not to general distribution, to the entire council.
Okay.
That would go past the board.
That answers your question.
Okay. Is that okay then, Jake?
It is what it is, Mayor.
Okay.
It, I don't believe that it's correct, but it is what it is.
Okay. Any other questions on any of the other committee reports? Hearing none, then I will accept the motion to accept those reports.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Casey, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No old business, new business. Rezoning 202 Clark Street from residential four to commercial one. If you notice, there will be three individuals that are listed on the agenda tonight. Henry Sherman, Nick Callaway, and Christine Rail. I saw Christine, and I see, oh, there's Nick back there, okay. The reason they're here tonight is because the council will get in discussion about this rezoning of this property. Butch will represent the individuals that, there was, you just received a letter again today, of some individuals that have signed a letter opposing it. You also got copies of a hundred and some people that are speaking in favor of it. The reason these individuals are here tonight, like I said, Butch will represent those people that are against it. Christine is the one who is requesting the rezoning from an R4 to a C1. If anybody has any questions about her request, you can ask her directly. I'm not going to open up the floor for general discussion, because I think we already went through that at planning, or at finance and personnel. There was a public hearing also at the planning commission. So I think what I'd like to do tonight is, I would like to start with the council for discussion. If you have any questions of those three individuals, please feel free to ask them. I will ask them to stand and answer any question that the council might have. I'm gonna just go around the horn. John, I think you're gonna have some comments. Do you want to start out?
I was advised by my wife not to start, but I think I...
Oh, well, that's fine. That's fine.
But I will go ahead and go out on my own. I do have some comments on this. It said, "This request for a zoning change has led me to a great deal of research into the subject of rezoning itself. This is the city's third rezoning slash variance action in this neighborhood in my recent memory. Residents have experienced the sequential variances on Third Street of one of the houses that was up for redevelopment, redesign, remodeling, which has not been good. And the rezoning of the corner lot at Third and Clark from R1 to C1, none of these have been positive experiences for the neighborhood, and eroded trust in the city to follow through with these kinds of actions in a positive way. Our ordinances lack the flexibility that modern development and change requires. Without lot use restrictions, we are left with a binary choice. What is allowed under R4 and all that is allowed under C1? That's our choice. This is not a referendum on the particular businesses, on a particular business in Algoma. This is a zoning change we are considering. The day after zoning a lot, any other allowed business under C1 zoning is available to the property owner. There is no condition to restrict how that lot is used. I recommend a review of the zoning ordinance, ordinances, more than one, with an eye to give greater flexibility to the planning commission in order to come to a better, more equitable recommendation. This is clearly a winner and loser scenario with no room for other scenarios. I further recommend a more hands-on approach by the zoning administrator and the building inspector in terms of onsite visits for code enforcement and discussions with all zoning change applicants to more fully answer questions on the application for zoning changes and variances. Because of the current ordinances and demonstrated oversight practices of the city, I do not currently, that do not currently preserve the look, feel, and daily living of this neighborhood. You will hear my vote later."
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the request for the rezoned property? Casey?
Yeah, I mean, I think John brings up valid considerations as far as not having restrictions on any of our parcels leads us to poor decisions. I, you know, but one thing I think about is, we're focused on this as how it impacts this particular neighborhood, but I think where this particular neighborhood is located is within our downtown. And Algoma's such a small city anyways, so how is the downtown not as much of a neighborhood as that particular location? And I can understand the qualifications that you make about it, and I read all the opposition letters, and I can appreciate the situations that they're in. And while we're not considering the individual business that's potentially going to happen, we're considering all, your point is valid, John. I trust that the principal parties that are involved are going to proceed as they're going to. And while we may have made decisions that, at this time, don't appear to be in a positive or a satisfactory manner, it doesn't mean that those particular opportunities don't have future changes that are going to make them better necessarily. So I think that even though your considerations are valid, it would be good to look at that going forward at future rezoning considerations, both the building inspector with more of an active role, an active building inspector, as well as property contingency restrictions based on our zoning policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jake?
This is the first reading, is that correct?
This is the first reading. We can waive the second one if we would like to this evening, but when we get to the next item, I'll ask that. At this part, if you notice, there's two items on here, item A and item B, referring to the same thing. Item A is strictly for discussion, to try to answer any questions that you as an alderman, alderperson might have. And then item B will be actually to vote on the ordinance itself, or the first reading. Now, we can waive the first reading and go right into the second reading, which we have the authority to do as a council. If you do the second reading and pass it tonight, then it would be done. Otherwise, the first reading, the second reading would be at the next council.
Okay. That was the only question I had.
Okay. Lee?
Well, I just, as everybody else said, I understand what their concern is, but it is the business district of Algoma, and it's downtown. Where else are they supposed to, we're supposed to do it? I mean, we have no other property around. And I think we discussed this at the planning, you know, you discussed it very thoroughly at the planning, the first one, and then we had the second one. And it was voted yes at that time, and I just think that it should move forward. I mean, we've had enough disagreements, agreements, yes, no's, whatever, and it just, we just keep repeating ourselves here, and it just, you know, progress isn't going to happen in the City of Algoma if we just keep doing this. People are just going to say, I had enough, I'm going somewhere else. We're trying to better the city, not the, you know, some certain neighborhoods are going to be able to do this, and other neighborhoods can't. That's just my feeling. And I understand where they're coming from, because, you know, they're in this situation, but I'm sure they knew this when they bought their residence. I mean, just because it never was like that 40 years ago or 50 years ago, things change.
Okay. Steve? Do you have any comments?
Nothing.
Leah? Scott?
All I would say is that for both those that were for this rezoning and against it, I had had the opportunity over this weekend to review all of the opposing and supportive letters. Makes my decision and how I'm going to vote very, very hard to do. It's not something that I personally take lightly, nor is it something that I think any of the council members up here take lightly. I can empathize with both sides of it, but with the overwhelming majority supporting this, that was made very clear, but it also, and whether or not some of the folks sitting in the audience here tonight are for or against it, this is not happening in our neighborhoods. It's not happening in my neighborhood. So I don't want to have any questions for the three individuals that are on here. I think it's pretty cut and dry. This thing has been before a couple of different committees and the planning commission. I know that they did their due diligence in reviewing and looking at the situation. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Kevin?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I will remind the council that this was a recommendation from the planning commission to move forward with the C1. Okay. As far as item B, the way I have it on the agenda tonight is the first reading of rezoning 202 Clark Street. We do have the option of doing this as a second reading. We can adopt it tonight, and it goes in effect. What is the wishes of the council? Any comments on that? Or do you want to stick with the agenda on the first reading?
I think, like Scott said, it's been dragging on long enough, and we should just go into the second. I think everybody here looks like they already have an opinion.
Okay.
And a vote. So my opinion would be that we just move forward and finalize it. Put her back.
Would you make a motion to?
I would make that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made to waive the first reading and go into the second reading. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Kevin? Okay. Let the minutes reflect, Aaron, that we are going to waive the first reading, go right into the second reading. Okay, that being said, I will accept the motion to rezone 202 Clark Street from R4 to C1.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Casey.
Second.
Seconded by Lee. Roll call vote, please.
Mary.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Lattonback.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Havick.
No.
Meverden.
Yes.
Piarkey.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that carries seven to one. Thank you. Item C, liquor application, Gold Ship Restaurant Group LLC, son of Scallywags, Agent Marshall Wiltfang. That came from your committee?
It did.
Okay, do you have any comments on that?
After review at the PPP committee, committee felt that we're good to move forward. Aaron, any comments?
Nope, no comment.
Everything worked out?
I have a question.
Sure.
Now, this would be in the Scallywag building?
Well, I guess Marshall, since you're here representing Scallywags, his question was, is it in the current Scallywag building?
It'll be off of 312 Clark Street, so it's in the same building, and then that outside block too.
Okay.
Now, is that building all up to date on, I thought at one time we had a tax issue, and all...
No, everything...
Everything's up to date?
In order to go for your liquor license, everything has to be paid and up to date.
Okay.
That it is, we checked it out, right.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Marshall? Thank you, Marshall. All right, if there are no other questions, I'll accept that motion.
So moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Any other questions or comments? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining?
Abstained.
Okay, there's one abstaining. Motion carries. Okay. Resolution number 1083-2021, levy limit adjustments. Jared?
Well, this was discussed in the finance and personnel committee the last week, two weeks ago. I apologize. So this is just necessary to preserve our full levy limit amount, and we need to adjust to the amount of, to be exact, where was it, $11,088. With the levy limit rules that we have in place for municipalities, we don't want to fall behind with that. It makes it that much harder to raise it the following year. So this resolution is meant to account for that. We did this last year very common. I don't know, I guess I'd have to answer any questions. It's a pretty standard.
I think we discussed it pretty thoroughly at the finance and personnel, unless there's somebody else that has any questions on it. Is there an echo? Is that me that's echoing, or is...
No.
There's a slight echo.
Just hears.
I have a point of order question.
Yeah.
On the ordinance number 833, the motion was to go to the second reading, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we didn't actually have the second reading?
We had, no, we have the right to waive the first reading, which we did.
Right.
We went into the second reading, so we actually adopted it this evening. Otherwise, we, the reading, the first reading would have been basically to go through the ordinance, and then next month, we would have actually adopted it.
So you don't have to actually read the ordinance?
No. The ordinance, no, we waived the first reading and went into the second, which we have a right to do as a council.
Okay.
Okay. Did somebody make a motion on the levy limit? I lost track.
Yeah, moved.
Moved by Jake, seconded by Kevin. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 1084-2021, rescue department fee schedules, everybody should have been able to look at that. Kelly's not here, and I don't know, Gus, if you want to comment on that?
That was just something that, looking with our billing company, you know, we just thought it was a point, we meet with them on a regular basis, look at the fees that we're charging in order to keep ourselves, you know, in the black and current with other area agencies, and these were some recommendations that came through them after consulting with us, and we agreed upon it, and that's what we're presenting.
Gus, does that cause any, do these increases cause any concern with the transfer agreements with Brown County?
Those limits that you put here, are they, is that just on your operating that they come off of, or is there a standard number? Like, are you in line with everybody else?
And that's what we do, that, we work with our billing company and check resources around the area to make sure that we're staying on the same competitive, so that we're in the market and not overcharging, not undercharging. That's how we work with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Gus. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Casey. Any other questions or comments? Since this does revolve around fee schedule, I'll do a roll call, please.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Havick.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Piarkey?
Yes.
Lattonback?
Yes.
Thank you. Redistricting review. Aaron?
Hi.
Hello?
So, the council got an email last week about the redistricting, um, the maps were sent out. Does anybody have any questions on those new maps, we'll start with that.
Does everybody understand?
Does everybody understand the maps and what's going to happen?
The only question I have is, do we gain people that we gained a district?
It's, no. Nope, due to the census, they had to split it up differently, so we maybe gained people, but not a significant amount of people.
I was just curious why we went from six to seven.
It, it has to do with the population, so I would assume that our population increased if we went from six to seven.
What, uh, I, I have, Jared, do you have any of the exact census data? What happened with our population?
We, we do not have that yet, uh, the county has, they have some population data that they're pulling from, but as far as the official census numbers, we do not have those yet.
How can they make this determination if we don't know what our population is, or what our, you know, we're just doing this on good faith?
Yeah.
I would assume that there are actual census population numbers at this point, 'cause if you look at, um, some of these maps, they have, he has the population in it, because when, when Steve explained it to me, sorry, not the whole population, but when Steve explained it to me, is if, if you did decide that we needed to change some of these boundary lines, in order to change, to add some to yours, we'd have to take some away from Casey's and kinda keep going that way with it, so that leads me to believe that we do have actual numbers that we're working off of.
So just to clarify, the city of Algoma does not have any official numbers, the county is using the information. So, I do not have an official record that I can provide the council saying this is our official population count. The county is using the census information, that's our source of information, is the same as what you have right now.
It'd be kinda snappy to know, wouldn't it? It'd be, be kinda cool to know what the population of the city of Algoma is, wouldn't it?
Well, there's a sign when you come into town.
Yeah, and every single one of them has got a different number.
Well, I, I, I think, I think what you're, I know what you're saying, Jake, and you're asking, what is, are we three thousand two hundred and some now, or are we three thousand three hundred and some? But for the sake of the redistricting, um, those numbers were not provided to us on how they figured it out, they looked at, this is basically does, done because of the county. The county tries to make sure that each county supervisor in the city of Algoma has basically the same number of residents that they represent. They just happen to come back, now, what it does, it doesn't really affect any of you that are on the council, what it does, it affects me as a resident, because now I have a different alderman or alderperson representing me that I had before.
A couple of the council one would change too though, correct?
No, none of the, so in other words, when we first met on this, then, it was, it was kinda confusing, 'cause when we first met, we were going to have, for example, we'll just use Kevin and, and Scott as an example, now because of the redistricting, they were basically running against each other. But now, when they came back and they did this, Scott basically stays and keeps his same ward, and so does, um, Leah, except they have different boundaries, different areas that they're gonna represent.
But they don't live in that district, is my point.
No, they will.
Yeah, they do.
They do.
It's tit for tat.
Yeah.
Basically, we're, ward two would be giving up some and gaining some.
Yeah, I've got them up here, I mean, I see the line.
So in other words, they're, they're still representing their ward, but the boundaries of their ward has changed.
Yes.
I think the only ones that really weren't affected are Leah and, uh,
Jake.
Jake.
They gave them.
Us all fart.
Well, no, but our, our boundaries, our boundaries have changed significantly.
They didn't wanna change it for us all fart, no. We were confused, yeah.
I have a question about the Excel spreadsheet that came out with the maps, that was first sent out.
Yeah.
Where did those numbers come from?
I would assume from the census, that's straight from, um, the county. That Excel spreadsheet, I did not put together, that came from the county.
It looked like it was census information
I, I have a
For each of the wards and giving us, if you total it, what the
Correct.
Population for Algoma is according to the census.
Yep, I have it on my to-do list to call, I will call Steve or, um, the county and find out what our census is tomorrow, and see if we can get that number or if it's available. Because like John said, it, it leads me to believe, we've gotta have some kind of numbers, just due to them being able to say, well, you have so many people in this block and so many in this block.
When you've got the first set of maps, including the, the whole city map, and then each map by, um, by ward, there was an Excel spreadsheet at the very end of that, that Excel spreadsheet listed population.
Yeah, I saw that, but, but, but then again, the disparities between wards was significant.
Was there any?
And I thought it was supposed to be a balan, a, a balanced, a balanced deal, but they weren't balancing it for our convenience, they were balancing it for the county's convenience.
Correct.
Well, and that's the object of it.
I don't know if convenience is the right word, but, yes. So, there's also legislation that says that you can only, or you, the minimum number that you can have in a ward is X. Due just to the way Algoma's population lines out, the new ward seven, so that would now be Scott's ward, if this goes through, if we vote on this, um, doesn't have three hundred people. And you'd see that when you add all of these up, but there's nothing you can do about it, if, you can't just put more people in a ward, and if we do, then we have to take them from somewhere else.
Put a couple.
Within the city, so we'd have to short somebody else.
Put a couple pins in the pool.
Um, and also, if you look at those maps that were provided, you see that there's blue lines and there's gray lines, and some of the blue lines go over the gray lines. The gray lines is where we don't really have any flexibility, because the gray line is the approved supervisor boundary. The blue lines, blue only, blue only, is where we would have some flexibility to be able to move, but again, if we move it one way, we've gotta be able to move it another way. Somewhere else, which then doesn't look real good, because you've got a gray line behind it, so it's kind of tricky. Um, this is not something that I did, this is not something that I have knowledge in, this comes from the county, this happens once every ten years with the census. So I apologize, I, I don't have all the information on it, but I can certainly go back to Steve and anybody else at the county and try and figure out what you need to know.
Did it change your supervisor, county supervisor, where, are we all still at our same county supervisor, or did that change, you know, for our rep?
I believe that will change in, in one area.
It's changed a little bit.
Yep. Again, I don't know who
Right, I was just asking, I mean,
But yes, I believe that has changed.
And I'm sure you'll find it all out, I mean, it's nothing we can do about it, but.
Yeah.
One is the same, it looks like.
Question?
Yes.
Will we be adding back the northern end of Sunset to our city? Or?
No, we, we, that next, that's gone.
Did we? Okay. It's part of town of Annappea.
They wanted to go to Annappea, 'cause they said, uh,
Pierce needed more people.
I
You're outta here. Good catch, though. You're just nothing no more.
Yeah, I, if, if, if they're receptive, I, I would have one, one change request, that would be it.
You are with her like you were before, except that your area that you cover is different. Now, we, keep in mind, this is only the first reading, I'm not gonna push this up to adopt as a second reading tonight. This is only the first reading, so, if you have any questions on it, she'll get more information, Aaron will get more information and share it as she gets it, because we are curious, what is our population now? So that all the signs, when you come into the city, will read the same? I wish, I wish it would be four thousand and some, or five thousand and some, but it's probably not gonna change a lot.
When we adopt this, it'll be
It's gonna be curious, like you
Yes.
If it goes into effect immediately.
Aaron?
One moment, please. Okay.
Okay, Steve just had a good question, and I, and I'm sure I'll answer it right, but I'm gonna ask you too. When this goes into effect, their rep, the, the people that are on the council, the people they represent will change immediately.
Immediately, yes.
So, in other words, I will be inheriting a new alderperson once this thing goes into effect.
Oh, that's frightening.
How do you know who I'm getting?
It's on the map.
It's on the map.
It's on the map.
But yes, that is correct, um, from my understanding, this goes into effect
Immediately.
Immediately, um, I believe the county is having their final on this on eleven nine, um, so they would like to ha, us to have our stuff in line before then. Um, any changes that we make, I do wanna say we may have to have another special council meeting to try and get this in, because this stuff does have to be published as well. And, okay, let me see what this changes here.
Um, and just for as point of order for the rest of the council, alderman Mary has requested that we look into potentially moving one of the boundaries, and so, we can certainly look into that as a possibility, but that, we'll have to adjust, um, somewhere else, if, if we were to do that.
We are not able to
Yeah.
Oh, this one, okay, so not the gray one, but to move this one.
Right, to move it to overlap with the gray line. But then we have to
I would assume then that we'd have to pull from somewhere else.
What, can you share that with us, or are you, uh?
Yeah, yeah, so
Do you have your map in front of you?
Why don't I just, I'll go make
Super secret.
I'll go make some photocopies.
Oh, we all have this map.
The map is right there, there's copies of it by the agenda. If you all have the map
We all have this, right?
Okay, if you could find Parker.
Parker and, Parker and Jefferson.
It's just below Sunset, so if you find Parker, bring it up to the gray line, where you see that blue line there.
Yeah, up to, where it goes north to Fremont.
Here's Parker.
Yeah. I'm on Parker.
Yeah.
And which way am I going, north?
West.
West to Sunset.
I'm going west to Sunset.
So you'd pull that blue line up to Sunset.
Oh, yeah.
So fifty-one, twenty-one, thirty-seven.
So fifty-one, twenty-one, and thirty-seven?
Correct.
Yep.
And where, oh, that line over to Sunset?
Oh.
That would be
So you want Clark.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's Fremont. It go, it would be Fremont, Fremont to Jefferson.
Is it, is there a reason for that move?
What's the reason for the move?
What, what?
Yeah, what, what's your reasoning for the move?
No, I, I just, I, I, I'm trying to raise my representation up a little bit here.
And I think we should be pulling it down.
No.
We can't for Scott.
Careful, careful, Jake, you might find somebody that wants to run against you if you move it.
Well, then, 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 you know, if that doesn't work, then thirty-seven and twenty-one.
Uh, so is your, your reasoning for wanting to move it up to increase the number in your
Correct.
I, I will see what we can do about that, um.
You didn't discuss that with me. Yeah, maybe, maybe I don't want that.
And, 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 and there are, there are, there are a couple of, there are a couple of folks there that I'm sure nobody else really would rather deal with. And I'm just trying to be nice to my fellow alderpeople.
No, I, I understand, I will ask them, um, I will, I will call Steve right away tomorrow morning and have an update back to the council as to what it is.
Can I, can I keep this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you know, I, I've got a printer at home.
There's several copies.
Well, they're probably more coming back.
Okay, so
I have one more question.
Yeah.
Do you know then, if you move that line, I think I read somewhere in here, and I didn't wanna put the number up, but each, every person would represent like a thousand people, that sounds too much, because we have too much representation, but so if you take fifty people out, how much, how much can it vary between districts?
As many people as I take out, I have to put back in.
You have to, absolutely, you can vary fifty people, okay.
Correct.
So you're not gaining anything now.
So you
No, that's what I, that's what I wanna stress here, is not, I know you want your num, the numbers higher, but
I, I, I'll tell, I, I don't wanna get into the, the, there are reasons, and I'll let Aaron know. Rather than, rather than, rather than.
There are three blocks of wild speculation.
There's, there's, there are three blocks of wild speculation. One has the medical center in it, and that way I can make sure I'm keeping track of John all the time.
John, John don't live in that ward, John's got his own ward.
Well, it, it, it's my understanding that Kathy's rented him a room, but I, oh, I wasn't supposed to let that out of the bag, was I?
Well, not to belabor this, uh, any longer, this is the first reading, so if anybody has any changes, go ahead, if you've got a question, feel free to ask now, but he brought up a change that he wants, keep in mind, if you add or subtract, you gotta adjust all of them to come out equal. So, whatever you decide to do, Aaron, make sure that you're gonna then probably come back to the council, and you're gonna say, well, we gave Jake this, and so and so is
The only one who's kind of locked, I guess, is Scott with seven, um, I will definitely bring it back, um, as far as the, um, the ordinance goes though, the ordinance doesn't reflect the lines.
No. It just
So I still think we could go forward with this ordinance, should we choose.
The ordinance is just basically talking about the aldermatic districts and the wards that make up that district.
Yep, so it talks about us adding a ward, and then because of the number change, the, um, city hall is no longer located in one, it's located in five. Um, but yeah, this, this will have to be published in the paper twice, I believe, and our plan was, if this went through tonight, we would publish it for the end of the week, the following week, and then have a special meeting after the finance and personnel meeting to make it official.
So do you want us to just go ahead and do, forget the second reading, make your comments, that's what you're suggesting?
Whatever works there.
That would be my suggestion, um, I, I don't know how you guys feel about this though, because with Jake's change
No, that, that's fine.
No, it's, it's okay, with Ja, and that's the thing, is I, I'm, I apologize, I don't have the answers for you, this, this happens once every ten years, this is very uncharted territory, not just for me, but for just about every clerk out there who, this goes on once, once a decade.
We went through this ten years ago.
Yeah, we, we ran through this ten years ago, it's not that people
I guess, I, I, just a point of clarification, the only question that I had was whether or not we pass ordinance number eight thirty-four, the questions and concerns that we originally had, one, two weeks ago
Are gone.
Are gone.
Correct.
We are not going to have council members that are going to be forced to run against each other.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to put it up there.
So what's your
What are we looking for?
What kind of motion do you want, and I'll make it, so you get to show.
Well, do you wanna, do you wanna eliminate and go right into the second reading and adopt it tonight, or do you wanna wait and think in case there's gonna be, now, this is the first that the public is hearing about this.
I don't believe that we can waive the second reading.
No, I think we gotta have
We, tonight, this is a draft.
Right.
This is, yeah, we can't waive tonight, tonight.
Because there's people that are hearing this for the first time.
Correct.
So. Okay?
So you need a motion to approve the first reading?
Yes.
Well
Well, right, 'cause then you would have it
As long as
At the council for final consideration after the second reading, correct?
Because what you're approving the first reading of right here is not gonna change if you decide to change the boundaries, it's still gonna be
Correct.
District number one is gonna include one and ward number five, and so on and so forth, and so
Here, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kevin?
I'll second it.
Second by Lee to approve the first reading of ordinance number eight thirty-four, since it's an ordinance, we'll do a real, roll call vote.
Mary?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Havik?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Lattonback?
Yes.
Piarkey? Yes.
Okay, because of the amending of the agenda, we'll go into the administrator's report.
Thank you, uh, first item on here, just wanted to provide a brief update on the redevelopment area number two, at our last council meeting, at the last conversation we had was about using the city engineer to move forward with the environmental assessment and to be the project manager for the demolition. So, I have follow-up conversation with them, our, our engineer, Robert E. Lee, immediately after that, um, and, long story short, uh, once they had a better understanding of the specifics of what we were looking for with that kinda narrow scope, uh, their estimates came way down from the initial amount that they anticipated, and so they're very comfortable that they'll be able to do everything we requested for less than the fourteen thousand dollars that the, uh, RDA has in available cash at any rate, uh, so that is underway right now, the environmental review process, they actually just were on site, I think, was it last week, Matt, or two weeks ago? Uh, they were on site looking at the building, uh, for asbestos and a lead paint and things of that nature, um, so that is underway. Uh, we do also have the, um, appraiser request for proposal are still out there, um, 'cause as I alluded to, or discussed at the finance personnel meeting, uh, we needed to put that on our website, because we only got one response, so we had to put it on our website to meet the procurement standards set by the state. Uh, so that will be wrapped up by the end of this week. Uh, twenty twenty-two budget, uh, calendar, uh, next week, October thirteenth, uh, Wednesday at six P M. is our budget workshop. Uh, this is, it, it's an open meeting, but it's really a meeting meant for discussion and dialogue between the council and, and staff. Um, we'll provide an overview of the budget, and then provide kind of a, a more detailed, not line item by line item, but a more detailed review of the significant changes by each department. Uh, and then that'll per, present the opportunity for members of the council to ask any questions, um, that you might have of those changes, or, uh, if you have, uh, or, uh, if you have, uh, things that you wanna see changed, to make them then. Uh, it, it's just meant to kinda help speed along the process when we get to the public hearing, which will be on November, the November first council meeting. And then obviously, the budget goes up for adoption after that. Um, but it, it's meant really to be that more kinda in-depth discussion, um, to get that more polished going into that public hearing. Uh, League of Wisconsin Municipalities Annual Conference, so far I have one council member that has indicated they wish to attend that. Please let me know by the end of this week, if you would like to attend, we have to get you registered, uh, ahead of time. That's at the KI Center in Green Bay, Wednesday the twentieth through Friday the twenty-second of this month. Uh, so yeah, if you could let me know by, by the end of the day Thursday, I'll get you registered, uh, on this Friday. And then, just a, a note on here, uh, Matt, Sarah, and I met with, uh, GFL, who is our waste hauler, our contractor, for that. There were a number of concerns that have been coming up repeatedly, and so we thought it warranted a, a conversation and a meeting with them. So we sat down, I thought had a very productive meeting. Uh, but for the folks at home, and just for the council's benefit too, if you were to get questions about this, moving forward, anyone who has an issue with their bins, such as it being damaged, or, uh, not, collection not occurring, uh, residents are, are directed to, uh, contact GFL directly. Uh, call the number that is provided here, and then they will take care of it. And also, we wanna remind people to have their bins out, no later than six A.M. the day of collection. Personally, I would recommend putting it out the night before, but that's just, you know, make sure it's out by six A.M. the, the morning of collection. You know, we've had some, some complaints about missed bins, but it, it's hard to determine whether those were simply missed by the collector, or by the driver, or if the bins were not out in a timely manner, cause they are getting here pretty early. So, um, just wanna remind people that, I've requested that we have these meetings with GFL on a regular basis, semi-annually, every six months, um, until we kinda get some of these ongoing issues permanently resolved, or at least to a part where it's acceptable, uh, moving forward. But I wanted to make note of that, because we have, I don't know if you guys have been getting a lot of complaints, but we certainly had been here at city hall, so I wanted to address that.
I have a question. So, if my wheel comes off my bin.
Yep.
Matt and his department has been very responsive in getting that fixed.
Right.
Yep.
So now I'm gonna have to call the company, what kinda deadline before I'm gonna get my cart fixed?
Could be anywhere from a week to three weeks, because I've had neighbors that waited up to three weeks before they.
Why, why the change, I guess, is that a request from Matt, because it was too much on his plate? Or is, why are they, why are they making the change now where we have to call them?
Uh, I'll, I'll try and answer this as diplomatically as I can. Some of the issues that we were having warranted the decision that we needed to enforce our agreement to the letter, which states that the contractor is responsible for those repairs.
I, I.
That's meaningless, what does that mean?
That, that doesn't make any sense to me.
We, Matt, do you wanna explain?
Were we fixing things and then not being reimbursed from the company? Is there anything I can think of?
No, we are not, okay. So, we were having such a problem going back about two and a half years ago, I think, two years ago, uh, myself, Lee, the mayor sat down with, before GFL, which is the same company, just a name change. And our office staff was dealing with such an overwhelming amount of phone calls to, my garbage can is broke, my wheels broke off, my lid is broke. And we were putting it back to GFL, because that's what our contract said, that they will come and maintain their bins, okay? With that being said, they were calling back to city hall, they were calling council members and women, um, you know, it's been a week, it's been two weeks. I can't move my bin. So we took it over internally to move it. Now with what's going on with our contract, and getting into the point of contract negotiations of where we're going to go and how we are going to move forward, we're putting it back on them to make them liable for what they have stated in their contract. Is it gonna work? It's probably not for the first month or two, but we need to try to hold them accountable for what they have in their contract to give us something to go back after them at negotiation time, or how we're gonna move forward, to say, you can uphold your side of your contract.
And, and I completely understand that. The problem we had in the past is they gave you a toll-free number to call. You called it, you got a voicemail, and nobody ever called you back.
Yep, so, uh, one thing I wanted to point out here in Jared's report, I don't know that that number that's listed is the right number.
That's the Door County, that's in the.
Okay, so then, this is not the right number that's in Jared's report. Um, any, because people have been calling in and needing this done, um, there's a number that I give them, which is a direct customer service dispatch line. Um, as soon as they, I give them the number, I always follow up with, if this isn't done by Friday, please call me back, and I will handle it with GFL. Um, so far since we've made this switch, which is what, two months, three months? There has been no calls back for Matt or his guys to have to go fix any of the bins. GFL has been very responsive to it. Um.
What do you consider responsive?
What do I consider responsive, that if they call me on a Monday or a Tuesday, that their bins are fixed by Friday?
Okay.
Two.
I had three of them on my block, I could see out my living room window, and they sat there for two weeks.
How long ago?
Well, half a month ago.
Okay. If you could have them contact me, so I can get their address, and we can.
Can you give us, get us those addresses down in the city hall, we?
Yep, we'll take care of it.
I mean, they're fixed now, but I mean, it took that long, because.
And, and I tell the residents.
And at that time, nobody said nothing, so they come to me and said, hey, I says, we'll call Matt.
Yep. And I tell the residents, when they call, when they call me directly, um, if this is not fixed by this date, please, please let me know, and I, and then we'll take care of it. Not as in Matt or his crew will take care of it, but we'll escalate it as well.
Understandable, but at the same time, when you've made that decision, you should've let the people, the older people know that now they're taking care of it, instead of the public works people. Because that's why I was answering them and saying, we'll call Matt, and if he can't, then let me know. Well, then I went by Matt, well, he says, we don't do that no more. But in between that time, that was top secret, you couldn't tell none of us.
Well, I, I.
God, it's just, what's the matter with communications?
Well, I understand why, Matt, your point, because they do have a contract, and we should hold them to it.
And I'm not against that, you know?
My concern is that, let's just see how receptive they are to the phone calls and, you know.
Yep, and we also kinda wanted to have a trial period with this, with them to, we didn't, there was a first meeting that happened, and it, it did not go the way that we had hoped it would go, so we had to reschedule that meeting. Um, that meeting was not able to be rescheduled until last week. So we thought we would give them enough time in between there to take the calls, and then is this switch going to be official? That was one of the things that we had talked about at our meeting last week, is, is this going to stay on GFL's shoulders? Or will it come back to public works? It's staying with GFL.
So timing is we, basically a week that you knew about.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine, all right. That answers my questions, anybody else have any question, other questions on this report?
I got a budget question. Are we gonna talk about the budget and finance, cause I won't be here at thirteen? So are we gonna talk about a finance meeting too?
We certainly can, yeah.
Are you gonna send us the budget, so we can?
You'll have it before the workshop.
I will, cause I'm not gonna be at the meeting, I'm gonna have to do the budget.
Okay, uh, any other questions of the administrator? Then let's go down to the mayor's comments, um, as you can see, I've had an individual that has resigned from the medical board. Um, so I'm looking for a replacement, if there's anybody that lives in the city of Algoma that is interested in serving on the medical board, please notify me and give me a call, and I will definitely, uh, consider you. The other thing I wanna talk about just a little bit tonight is a reminder, on Saturday, October thirtieth, there is gonna be Kiwanee County Clean Sweep. Um, they do that every once in a while, it's gonna be held at the Kiwanee County Highway Shop, the Hillside location, and it's gonna run from eight in the morning till noon. There's an extensive list of what they're gonna accept, so rather than reading through that, I suggest you go out to the city website. Aaron's gonna have that information out there. It's gonna also talk about what's not acceptable, but the stuff that's not acceptable, there's, it talks about a, um, transfer station that will take those items if you call a certain number for a fee. So I just wanna give everybody a heads up. Um, if you have any questions, it's out on our website, list everything out there. Uh, so I think it's a great opportunity for people to get rid of some of the stuff that they've been keeping in their basement or their garage for a long time. That's all I have, uh, under mayor's appointments and report tonight. Don't forget, agenda items for next meeting, and next meeting date will be Monday, November first. At this point, I'd accept the motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. City facility update. Accept the motion. Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Leah, roll call vote.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Mary.
Here.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Latenbach.
Yes.
Piarkey.
Yes.
Mervin.
Yes.
Cavick.
Yes.